No, right, it's crazy. Well, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to today's budget policy meeting. I'm gonna go in and call it to order. We'll start with introductions, starting to my right with the clerks.
Good afternoon, I am Alyssa Easton, Deputy Clerk to the Board.
Good afternoon, I'm Madison Little, Senior Admin with the Clerk's Office.
Good afternoon, I'm Commissioner Susan Rodriguez McDowell, and I have the honor of being elected by the people of District Six.
Good afternoon, I'm Laura Meyer, and I represent District Five.
Good afternoon, everyone, my name is Mark Jarrell, I've been elected by the people of District Four, welcome.
Welcome, and thank you, my name's Arthur Griffin, I have the pleasure of serving as County Commissioner at Large.
Good afternoon, my name is Philman D. Leek, and I represent the most powerful district in the county, and that happens to be District Two, and I'm just leaving a meeting with my people in District Two this morning.
Good afternoon, I am Elaine Powell, representing District One, which is Huntersville, Davidson, Cornelius, and North Charlotte.
Good afternoon, Tyrone Wade County Attorney.
Good afternoon, I'm Mike Bryant, Mecklenburg County Manager.
Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you, everyone, before I turn it over to the manager, I always want to level-set our meetings with, to ensure that the community is aware and that we're always mindful of our mission, our vision, and our board priorities to help us navigate our discussion. So, our mission is to serve Mecklenburg County residents by helping improve their lives and community. Our vision is Mecklenburg County will be a community of pride and choice for people to live, learn, work, and recreate. The FY 2627 Board Budget Priorities are as follows: Economic Development, Education, Environmental Stewardship, Health Equity and Wellness, Services for Seniors, Workforce Development, and Reducing Racial Disparities. So, I just, again, believe that it's important for us to level-set and keep those things on the forefront of our minds and help us guide our discussions. And with that being said, I'll turn it over to the manager to tee up the first agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, good afternoon, again, you have two items on your agenda this afternoon. The first item is a follow-up from our September 9th Public Policy Workshop Meeting. You may recall that Zach Lewis, Senior Assistant to the County Manager, briefed the Board on a vacant facility that's located at the corner of LaSalle and Vettie toward the road. Based on the feedback that you provided to staff, we went back to incorporate that feedback, and Zach is here today to brief you on that update and also provide a recommendation to you for consideration. So, with that, I'm gonna ask Zach come forward and present to the Board.
Alright, good afternoon, Commissioners, Chair Jarrell, County Manager Bryant, and staff. My name is Zach Lewis, and again, I am the Senior Assistant to the County Manager here in Mecklenburg County, and it is great to be here with you all today. So, the purpose of this presentation, as the manager mentioned, is as a follow-up from the September 9th B.O.C.C. Public Policy Meeting regarding a working recommendation for a community center inside of the vacant county property at 2324 LaSalle Street. From that meeting, the Board had directed a couple of follow-up items from that initial recommendation. And so, this update today will provide information on those follow-up items, as well as seeking approval from the Board on the updated recommended usage of this facility based on community feedback, B.O.C.C. feedback, and the incorporation of that into this proposal. So, the agenda today, we're gonna provide a quick recap of that 99 presentation, the September 9th initial presentation, share some insights into community leader engagement into this proposal, then share the refined recommendation, as well as next steps. So, first, beginning with a brief recap to refresh everyone on the prior presentation. So, as a refresher, this facility is located at 2324 LaSalle Street. And just to help orient folks, again, with this aerial view here, what you see in green is the parcel of land where that facility is located. The main road that is going north to south is Beatty's Ford Road, and LaSalle Street is the road that is going east to west. And so, this project was spurred from multiple Commissioner Ride the Districts with the manager, where multiple Commissioners had inquired on a potential to utilize this building for a community center or to house community programs geared towards youth and teens in the Beatty's Ford Road area, notably the Lincoln Heights neighborhood. To reshare just a little bit of the building history we previously reviewed, usage of this building has passed between the Charlotte Mecklenburg Library, City of Charlotte, CMS, Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools, and to the county from 1956 all the way through 2024. The library donated this property to the county in November of 2024 due to no identified usage needs. Several CMS schools are in the immediate surrounding area. This property neighbors the Lincoln Heights neighborhood. There is a CATS bus stop directly in front of the property. And for a more detailed breakdown of what we had reviewed prior, there is a lengthy appendix at the end of this presentation, and that further detail is located on page 27 of that appendix. To share, again, some of the building characteristics we had reviewed prior, and also these images, I will address in a moment, are images currently from inside of the facility. But, this building is 3,667 square feet, is a single floor with eight dedicated parking lots, and it adjoins a food line with a large parking area, if you are familiar with the general area. And the current facility layout includes an office area, open space, and restrooms. And, starting from the left with these pictures here, so these pictures are from just about a week ago. The first picture is as soon as you walk into the facility, so this is taken from right at the front door. When you walk in, if you turn left, that is the office space, which is the current, the second image that you see up there, in its current cubicle layout. And when you walk in the front, if you turn right, you go into current open space. And so, the picture on the far right is a big open area. In the last presentation, we also reviewed several frameworks and models that community centers are often designed and built upon, which included the Creative and Artistic Expression Model, Recreation and Safe Haven Model, Crisis Intervention Model, Youth Leadership and Civic Engagement, Skills and Career Development, Services for Seniors, and a Comprehensive Support Model. And the majority of your appendix, starting on page 29, are the details of each of those models we looked at, as well as some of the real-world examples of those models being built upon. There were several key considerations after reviewing the models that we had shared before that were considered leading to the initial recommendation. And those included: Who is the target population? Who or where should these offerings be targeted towards? What are the needs of the community, the needs of that target population? Which models best fit the needs of the community? What adjacent services currently exist in the area, considering things such as libraries, park and rec facilities, faith-based services, et cetera? What would the service hours be of this facility, such as all-day versus after-school or even summer offerings? What would participation or service offerings look like in this? Service offerings first being, would there be in-house services? Or would things be referral-based? Participation being drop-in, where anybody can come in and access what services are there? Or would it be registration-based, where you have to sign up ahead of time, likely with a program cap? Looking at administration, would this be, would this community center be administered by the county, a nonprofit, or even a little bit of both, or partnership between multiple nonprofits? What would the governance structure look like? Who would direct the actual day-to-day operations of the facility? And would there be any cost associated with participating in programs? And all of those considerations led to what was shared last time as the initial working recommendation. And so, those considerations got us to this, where this initial recommendation focused on establishing a community center in this building by identifying a primary nonprofit partner to manage and oversee the LaSalle Center, and identify additional partners to facilitate programming and services across a variety of program areas. The target population would be youth through teens and families in the Lincoln Heights neighborhood. And the goal of the center would be to provide convenient, accessible, and safe opportunities for the whole family to increase their upwards economic mobility. The identified models in this initial working proposal was more of a hybrid approach, focusing primarily on including services from the Skills and Youth Development Model, Youth Leadership and Civic Engagement, as well as Comprehensive Support. And the service offerings were initially proposed to maximize the usage of this facility, tailoring primary services to families and adults throughout the day, and youth through teens after school hours, and possibly on the weekend and summer. The proposed governance structure of this center is to be administered by a sole nonprofit, again, with partnership programming as governed by a community committee. And so, that is the recap. And so, now transitioning into the follow-up items that came out of that initial presentation. So, there were two primary follow-up items from the 99 presentation. The first, to meet with community leaders and gain feedback on the initial working proposal, and seek any additional feedback and community needs from the community leaders of the Beatty's Ford Road and Lincoln Heights area neighborhoods. And, the second follow-up, consider an option of multiple operators within this facility, such as a hub model, where multiple nonprofits are within the same facility, possibly in suites, offering programs and services out of the same building. So, to that end, over the past month, several communities, community leaders, and representatives were met with. Those include: The Friendship Community Development Corporation, My Sister's Place, The Northwest Council of Elders, The Lincoln Heights Neighborhood Association, Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools' Strategic Partnership Staff, and the Life for Hopeless Foundation. And I will note as well, the Northwest Council of Elders also consisted of faith-based representation in their feedback and conversations. These connections and conversations developed organically through all of the individual conversations and encompassed a number of perspectives. Each individual and group conversation was incredibly informative, enjoyable, and very passionate regarding this initial working recommendation, as well as just general information and learning about the Lincoln Heights neighborhood and the Beatty's Ford Road corridor. These conversations even included feedback from folks who worked in this building at some point as well, too, providing good insights on capacity and physical space limitations. And although each of these groups have been thanked already tremendously, I would again like to express my thanks to each one of them individually. So, to each of you, thank you for your incredible insights and your love for the community. So, there were several pieces of feedback from the discussions with each of these groups. And I am happy to report that overall, the initial recommendation, which we will take a look at in a moment, aligned with the feedback from the various groups met. Now, there were some additional recommendations that we will take a look at, but some other pieces of feedback were that there is absolutely a need for a community center in this area, particularly geared towards youth and teens. There is a need for academic and skills assistance. Boys and Girls Club used to be in this area and offered a significant number of services to this target population, but has left a void since leaving the area. There is significant energy and alignment among community leaders to bring programs in this area. Law enforcement must be involved in some capacity. There is a medical services gap in this area. Business owners are expressing significant concerns regarding the lack of services for youth through teens. And, there are various potential workforce development program ideas on the horizon along the Beatty's Ford Road corridor. Some additional recommendations that came that were not considered in the initial proposal is that physical space limitations are a significant constraint with this building. So, it is important to identify a defined set service to be available inside of the building, as physically it cannot adequately provide numerous different offerings inside. However, one of the biggest takeaways was looking beyond the physical walls and limited space of the building, and considering the feasibility of pop-up services in the adjacent spaces to the building to address a variety of the more comprehensive additional needs of the community. For example, utilizing the open space as a location for food box distributions, clothing closets, health screenings such as mobile mammograms and mobile clinics, et cetera. And so, other recommendations also included possibly using this location for quarterly resource fairs, having onsite information regarding county services, possibly involving law enforcement in a capacity as being a pickup location for things such as the Police Athletic League, as well as ensuring that there is mental health resource information onsite as well. So, now, considering all of the conversations and feedback gathered, we will now transition to the updated recommendation. But first, I want to return quickly to the key considerations that we had reviewed earlier, as there are two more considerations that were more closely examined since the original presentation, and those are highlighted in red at the bottom. First, adjacent programs on the horizon in the area, such as potential workforce development programs that were learned about during some of these community conversations. And the second, is better understanding what is actually feasible in this building based on the physical space limitations. And understanding that based on these limitations, that it cannot cover all of the needs within that we know the community needs. So, in the initial working recommendation, there were four buckets that had been identified as potential program ideas, as seen here. And so, these are the four buckets from the initial proposal. Bucket one had considered youth through teen academic and life skills with potential program offerings such as after-school drop-in hours for academic support and enrichment, creating a safe place, mentorship and leadership development programming, recreation and creative expression programs, personal development offerings, and even potentially mindfulness and mental health workshops. Bucket two, considered adult and family empowerment-based services, including things such as financial literacy, career coaching, parent and family support workshops, legal workshops, or resources assistance. Bucket three, workforce readiness pathways, considering options such as workforce readiness programs, hard skills and certifications, entrepreneurship and business fundamentals, and even apprenticeship academies or personal finance course offerings. And bucket four, lastly, community and family engagement, with possible services such as community projects, service and volunteer initiatives, parent-child activities, or even youth and family events. And so, with that, I would like to share this refined and updated recommendation where upwards economic mobility is at the core of this community center, with the potential of also addressing more comprehensive community needs. This recommendation would seek to identify a primary nonprofit to occupy and run the facility, and offer dedicated programs and services around accelerated academic pathways. The intent is geared towards youth through teens' academic and social success, while also including services for adults seeking to gain that next edge in their upwards economic mobility pathways. And services could include, in pillar one, those after-school academic drop-in hours, academic support and enrichment, mentorship and leadership development, career and college readiness assistance, GED tutoring, as well as entry-level certification assistance. Second, is to provide utilization of the open interior space, when available, to identify partners in the skills space, offering the space for pop-up workshops and skills-based recreational activities, such as 3D printing, audio production, product design, graphic design, in essence, where partners could come in and utilize that space to offer workshops in the programs that they help employ. And other pop-up services as identified and potentially needed in this open space as well. Lastly, also assessing the possibility and feasibility of utilizing some of the exterior outdoor space for pop-up services that could address a significant variety of more comprehensive community needs. Pop-up services could include: Food box distributions, clothing closets, mobile health clinics, the same things that we had mentioned prior, as well as other services as well, too. And importantly, the intent of pop-up services, whether interior or exterior, is to eventually reach a place of routine, where community members know that on a certain day or days of the month, there is a certain location where specific services would be offered. The recommended governance structure of the facility remains unchanged from the initial recommendation, which includes three primary roles. The lead entity, which would be Mecklenburg County, whose responsibilities would be primarily around providing the facility and facility maintenance, funding and approving a lead operator budget, identifying the activity scope for the facility, managing an application process for identifying the lead nonprofit operator, overseeing performance, and potentially assisting in outreach and communications. Second would be the lead operator, who would be that primary nonprofit, whose primary job would be establishing and maintaining operations of the facility, identifying and maintaining partners for these pop-up services, developing program scheduling and a pop-up calendar, identifying potential additional funding streams, and establishing performance indicators and reporting. The third, a community advisory board, which tends to encompass neighborhood residents, including both teens and seniors, county representation from the nonprofit community, as well as the law enforcement community. And the job of the advisory board is often established during the early planning stages to direct activities, activity decisions, and major points in the operations to propose to the county. I did want to provide, just very quickly, a nod to some additional operating model considerations that were explored outside of this single-operator model. This includes a dual-operator model, where two nonprofits have a dedicated space inside, ideally with expertise geared towards two different target audiences, such as one geared towards adults and families, and the other towards youth, as well as a hub model, where there is essentially suites for multiple nonprofits that operate in some capacity outside of this shared building. So, listed here are the biggest pros and cons for each of those models. However, I do want to highlight, the biggest con is the significant physical space limitations of this building. These additional models could work in a different facility, but this recommendation is that this building is not the proper building for other models to be successful, which is why the revised recommendation places a heavy emphasis on pop-up services to potentially utilize outside of the physical space of the building. So, I want to provide just a very high-level timeline of major milestones, and it is important to understand that this process to begin actually delivering services from this building is likely to take at least a minimum of a year. As a note, this timeline is very preliminary, and it is a very high level. And the purpose is more to share some of the major steps that would need to take place. And these steps could include drafting the scope of work on the approved proposal, issuing a request for information to the community to understand the landscape of interested nonprofits in this space, reviewing the findings of that request for information, and then launching a request for proposals or a separate application process for nonprofits to apply, reviewing those, preparing to service an operating agreement with the chosen nonprofit. Then, once the partner has been identified, working with the county's asset and facilities management to determine if there are any needs or reconfigurations of the property. And the longest period of time tends to be when those approved changes actually occur, which historically tends to take a minimum of at least six months, but is very dependent on the partner and what needs were identified and approved. And so, in conclusion, with the Board of County Commissioners' approval, the county will begin drafting the scope of work to issue a request for information and begin the formal process of identifying a nonprofit and preparing this facility for usage. And so, with that, in the updated recommendation, I am happy to entertain any questions you may have, and thank you for your time to come share with you all again today.
Thank you, Zach. Before I turn to Commissioner Leek, because it's her district, and we're gonna lead off with her. But, Mr. Manager, I just wanna make sure, are you asking for a vote, or is it just general direction?
We're asking for your reaction to our recommendation and support, because pending the feedback, we wanna proceed with issuing the RFI as outlined in the presentation.
Alright, but we don't need necessarily a vote for that, it's just feedback. Okay.
It doesn't require a vote.
So, let's do this, let's start with Commissioner Leek. Madam Clerk, we're giving everyone three minutes, but because it's Commissioner Leek's district, I'm gonna give her a little extra time, give her four minutes, and then everybody else will get three. So, again, let's give the feedback so that the manager and staff have some level of direction. Commissioner Leek.
Let me first say thank you, Mr. Manager and Staff, who put this together. It's excellent, recommendations on all parts. I remember when we moved here in 1964, that was not there, that building, but then it was built as a library for the community at that time. And it has grown from that position to several positions held by the school system, which was not utilized well, nor did it serve the community as a resource center for that community. It did not. As you see, the well-drafting information that was gathered by this body and the manager, it is needed. How many of you have been on Kathy Simmons Street, right facing, not too far from that site? If you have not, then you have not been in Charlotte long. It's a drug haven, right there at the door of that facility. The next thing is in front of it, is a bus stop that we've been asking for 10 years to remove that bus stop, because it was where people were, and still exchanged drugs. And people hang out at the bus stop. Now, I was going over there every other week, but now I go every week through that neighborhood because it's in my district. And for my district to have a drug haven right at the door of a West Charlotte Senior High School, a rec center right down the street from West Charlotte Senior High School, elementary school, school performing arts is right there. So, the utilization for the school system, they have the resources there. But for the greater community, and especially for my senior citizens, it's not amenable now for what's going on on that area. And no disrespect to the people that live there, I cannot do that. My job as a county commissioner, I've asked them to research, tell me what my job is, what must I do? And talking to the community and going to community meetings over and over again to hear from the public, what can we use this for? Lincoln Heights has a park right there. The park has been taken over by drug dealers. So, this neighborhood has been neglected by this community. When I say this community, I mean Charlotte. Yesterday, no, Sunday, I was over there. Wheelchairs, raggedy clothes, dogs, people lying in the street, lying on the sidewalk in that building strip lying there, drug abusers in Mecklenburg County, one of the wealthiest counties in the city, I mean, in the state of North Carolina. We cannot not do what's right for the people who are dying in that neighborhood, young boys and young girls. I saw a 13-year-old, just as high as she could be Sunday, was being taken down the street, and I wanted to know where was the police department? Where's the health department? Where are the parents? We have major problems in that area. So, whatever decision we make must meet the needs of the people of that community to change it, to make it better, and it has not happened. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity. I'm just so full, and I'm sick and tired of being sick and tired of seeing my people not getting the protection they need, or the services that they need in that area. So, whatever we put there must meet the needs of our seniors, our people that live in that community to change that whole area, and that building could be an asset if that bus stop was moved and the changing of the dealing of drugs and alcohol right there in our faces. dealing of drugs and alcohol right there in our faces. So I'm asking you to please consider doing the right thing for the right people at the right time. I can't say anymore, from what I saw Sunday. I can't say anymore, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Leek. Commissioner Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My colleague mentioned Catherine Simmons. Catherine Simmons was my wife's hairdresser from youth until she was an old lady. So I knew Catherine Simmons very well, and her old family, her children. I even used a library there. So my comments in terms of the presentation, I think we ought to figure something out to make that an asset rather than a liability for that community. I would also, unless things have changed for over, since the beginning of time, that footprint was University Park. Lincoln Heights is to the east of Badis Ford Road. So there are a lot of children that lives in University Park, so please include those in your next presentation, so that people won't stop being territorial about this is Lincoln Heights. It's for all the kids in that area, but the footprint is actually University Park. A question about the 19 updated recommendations. I think security, whatever you do there, security has to play a role, whether it's our park and rec or local police department, which is down off of Oaklawn Avenue, might be able to come up. You mentioned something about Powell. Do we own the building that Powell is in now? It used to be an old recreation center on the corner of Statesville and Oaklawn Avenue.
I see Mark Hahn nodding his head, yes.
We're still on that? Okay. So, I mean, there may be some synergies around real estate that we own in that property. So if you have pop-up things, you might be able to have some geography to the various pop-up piece, but I've known that physical plant since I was born, in 1948. It didn't show up until 1956, so I was around. All right? Thank you for your presentation. I certainly support having a positive asset at that location. It's going to take a lot of coordination, but I think it's a commitment we ought to put, because as Dr. Leek said, the area certainly needs to have some attention paid to it. It is a tough area.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you. I've completely approved this plan, and I also want to remark how quickly this happened. So I really appreciate that. I'm really impressed with the timeliness of this, so thank you for that. And I agree with Commissioner Griffin, everything he said. I just have a question about process. Does this have to go into the CIP, or is this something we're putting in the 27 budget? Or how does, what's the process?
It does not have to go through the CIP. As has been pointed out, depending what program that we select, it may require some renovations. However, even with those expenses, I don't think it'd be qualified to go in the CIP. There may have to be some type of maintenance reserve or something. But also, the operating budget, there may be some recommendation to have a placeholder pending the timing of when this process is completed. So when we're ready to go, we'll have that funding in the recommended budget, so I'll be sharing that with you in May.
Okay, that's good news. Thank you.
Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm certainly supportive of this. I think utilizing this space for the good of the community is just a no-brainer, we have to do it. I also want to echo Commissioner Meyer and what she said about how fast y'all turned this one around, but the only other thing I would say is it would take a whole year to get to the next level, just feels like, man, this is government, you know, government speed. Like, this first part was quick, but now the next part seems like it would be really slow.
We wanted to manage your expectations. It may be sooner, but worst case is it may take up to a year to get that out there. But we're going to move and be very persistent now that we have your feedback.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Powell.
Thank you. I support this as well. And I just have two questions. One of them, you know, I know that Mark Hahn is here, and I don't know if you know the answer, because you don't know the use yet, but do you have any estimate of the funding that'll be required? So you don't have that yet. I just wondered. And the other one is, the community said that law enforcement, like, they believe that law enforcement needs to play an important role here, and I think Commissioner Griffin and Leek said the same thing. I don't know who said it, but Park and Rec does not have security, like, none of them are officers. So however we involve law enforcement, I think the community wants that, and I think that's important. And thank you, Zach, for your work and your pace. Thank you.
Yeah, so I think we're all extremely impressed by the pace of this, and I hope from a community perspective that they understand, and certainly to our colleague, the district rep, how important this is, not just to colleagues and yourself, but our staff and manager, you know, took this very seriously, and I think we all, so I want to just thank staff, number one, for doing this, Mr. Manager, Zach, and the entire team, because we certainly just saw this a month ago, and now we're back today with an actual plan. And so to any of the community who's listening, I want you to know that, you know, certainly there's a new sheriff in town, and we're moving not at the speed of government, we're moving a little bit faster, right? So I'll take that. The beginning of the meeting, I lifted up what our vision, our mission is, and so if you go back to our vision statement that I read, that Mecklenburg County would be a community of pride and choice for people to live, learn, work, and recreate. I highlight the term pride, because we have a building that's right now vacant in a community that does not need vacancy, another vacant building. They need investment.
Thank you.
They need to know that we care, and that we're going to stand by what we say our principles are, our values are, and what our priorities are. When you look at our priorities to tie this back, again, I think all of our conversations really need to make sure, we need to make sure we're centering with respect to what those priorities that we've outlined. So when you think about things like education or workforce, reducing racial disparities, and to a large extent, economic development, Commissioner Griffin lifted up other assets, and someone else lifted up other assets that we have in that area. So if you're talking about the Powell Building that we own, or the library that's in close proximity, we do have a park on Catherine Simmons. We do need law enforcement, to your point, Commissioner Powell. And so the only thing that I would suggest is, and I think the presentation was great, I certainly support it, we have three colleagues that are not here that I know that would support this as well, without question. But a concerted, coordinated effort to really help the community is going to be needed. If we just stand up a building just to stand up a building, and we've got some folks operating at it, that's great, but that's only part of the way. We do have to have law enforcement, we have to clean up and lean in to our other assets and protect those other assets, protect those residents that are there at that park that's on Catherine Simmons and all the other spaces around there. So that would be the only comment, but to make sure that we are coordinating with the other stakeholders that are needed to make this successful. So I hope that's positive feedback for you all and something to consider, and I want to thank my colleagues for their comments as well.
Thank you for that feedback. We have the direction that we're requesting. Zach, good job, I appreciate that. I also want to make the Board aware, you may recall that you asked that we bring forward a list of other vacant facilities for your consideration. We are working with AFM to compile that list, and we'll get that forward to you also.
Do, question, do we have any schools that's available, that's open, that we own?
You want to add schools to that as well?
No, I've been trying to get it from the school system for two years.
Okay. I can follow up with Dr. Hill on that.
Thank you so much, because the public wants to know.
Okay. Thank you, Zach.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Zach.
The next and final item on your list, I'm going to ask Chair that you recognize, Erin Standford, our Sustainability and Resiliency Manager, she's going to provide the Board an update on commercial property assessed capital expenditures, known as CPACE, and Roger Johnson will also support her as part of this presentation.
Fantastic. Erin, you are recognized, and certainly Mr. Johnson, you as well, sir.
Chairman Jerrell, I'm actually going to kick us off today. Members of the Public Policy Committee Commissioners, Mr. Manager, Counselor, and distinguished guests, I think I've got everybody in the room now, so we can proceed. Also, I'd like to recognize Erin Talber from the City of Charlotte, if you raise your hand, Erin, he's a subject matter expert, he works on their sustainability work over at the state, and he was invited to be part of this conversation if the need itself rose. So what is CPACE? CPACE, as the manager said, stands for Commercial Property Assessed Capital Expenditure. It is a financing tool authorized by the state of North Carolina that allows property owners to fund energy efficiency, renewable energy and resiliency improvements through a voluntary property tax assessment. This program allows for the modernization of buildings, environmental sustainability, economic development, growth, all funded by the private sector. There's no public investment involved in this particular program. There's a lot of legalese in that particular language. I'd just like to give you a real-world example and tell you how CPACE works, so that you may have some questions about how it actually operates. On a normal economic development project, what may happen for a developer is, they go find an abandoned building, and they go get a loan from the mortgage company to buy it. And once they buy that, they buy that property, they go back to a lender, and they get a construction loan. Now, a mortgage loan's usually around six, six and a half percent, a construction loan's around nine percent or so. The construction loan doesn't always cover all the expenses associated with the construction. They bought an abandoned mill, and they wanted to build marketplace housing in there, they may be able to tear down the walls, build new structures in there, turn it into bedrooms, and use it as marketplace. However, if they wanted to do certain aspects of environmental sustainability, such as replace the heating and air system with updated efficiency, replace the windows, oftentimes in mills, they're single-pane glasses, they may want to have double-plane or triple-plane pane glasses, so that they can have better energy efficiency for heating and cooling for their future occupants and/or to reduce emissions, as you could imagine. They may want to have LED lighting to replace that in that particular building. They may want to reuse the gray water, so they have to get new fixtures, so that gray water can be captured, and it can be used for irrigation or other types of things that can be used where it's not necessarily needed to be potable. All of those things, when you redevelop a building, can be very expensive, and sometimes a developer has to go get private capital, and if you're familiar with that term, that means they go to a high net worth individual, and they try to borrow money to do these things, but at that particular rate, a high net worth individual charges about 12 or 12 and a half percent for that cost of capital. Well, if they have to spend $5 million to do the work that I just said, that means they have to pay $20,000 more per month to pay off that particular loan. So what the state of North Carolina has said is that local governments can now pass a CPACE loan that will allow a developer to go back and get financing at about six or six and a half percent to do these infrastructure improvements and improve environmental sustainability. So that's what we're here to talk to you about today, is whether or not we should move forward with a CPACE program or not. Again, this is a fully voluntary program, it's 100% handled by the finance of the private sector, we would not necessarily be involved in that particular, this thing is not moving. So as I mentioned before, it's an alternative mechanism for commercial properties, again, it's not for residential, long-term, low-cost private capital for energy efficiency, renewable energy, water conservation and/or resilience project. So back in July, the state of North Carolina passed a bill, Senate Bill 802, which gave local governments the authority to adopt one of these CPACE programs. Staff has been working through the process of adopting a program, and Erin's going to now walk you through the basics of CPACE, where we've been, and where staff recommends going as next steps. With that being said, Erin, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Roger. Make sure this is, okay. All right, so what are some benefits of CPACE? Of course, projects will see energy utility bill savings, increased cash flows to them, reduced carbon emissions, enhanced building resilience, increased property values, but in addition to all of that, the assessments of these projects to these parcels, or properties, rather, run with the property. And so just to give some North Carolina-specific context, the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina, EDPNC, is the statewide administrator of this program. So they accept, review, and approve project submissions, excuse me, applications, and then they submit the documents within those applications back to local government. They record the assessment, and they also collect the fees associated with those particular applications. Our role, we accept the approved project applications and execute all related documents. This is a cost-neutral program, and so any costs that we do incur are reimbursed from the state of North Carolina. We do not assume any sort of liability nor financial responsibility within this program. Just to give a bit more Mecklenburg County-specific context, so prior to presenting CPACE to our Economic Development Committee, this topic was presented to and received favorably to all the town managers, as well as the City of Charlotte Economic Development Committee. Throughout the state thus far, there's been two counties that have endorsed CPACE, that's New Hanover County and Gaston County, with a recent redevelopment project financed partly by CPACE, upwards of $6.5 million, I do believe, in Gaston County. There are 23 other states throughout the country that have current active CPACE programs. To just take that one step further, CPACE is, of course, rooted in economic vitality, but also is aligned to our environmental leadership policy. Relevant and supportive experts, rather, of the environmental leadership policy include, to protect the environment for, I can't speak, for the future generations, is in the public's interest and key to the county's community vision. We do strive to provide all residents with an equitable opportunity to thrive, and we've committed to addressing inequities through systems, policies, and practices, and we are committed to partnering with municipalities, businesses, nonprofits, and other organizations that have common goals and interests to efficiently implement our environmental leadership policy. And so, as we just mentioned, we do have, there is a CPACE toolkit that was developed by the state of North Carolina. It was developed and then approved with the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina. We did receive endorsement from the Economic Development Committee in the spring of this year, and so we're here now presenting to you all CPACE, and we're hoping to receive an endorsement to. The next steps for us include, we have to pass a resolution to intent, intent, excuse me, a resolution of intent to join, and then also set a public hearing date. Once we have those two items approved by you all and conduct that public hearing, then we're able to pass a resolution to join. And then at that point, any commercial property within Mecklenburg County will be able to apply to this program. If we choose not to go that route, the city or the towns could follow those same steps to join, but they must enter into an agreement, a resolution of concurrence between the Board of County Commissioners, you all, and them. I will say, we've been contacted by developers from the City of Charlotte, within Huntersville, within Davidson, that have been very interested in when-if we're going to endorse this within Mecklenburg County. And with that, we'll take any questions. Thanks, you all.
Thank you both for the presentation. I'm going to start with our Chairs of Environmental Stewardship and Economic Development. We'll start with Commissioner Powell.
Thank you for the presentation. I think this could be very positive for Mecklenburg County, whatever we can do to encourage all these things, use of gray water, renewable energy, like, true renewable energy, I think it could be very good. Can we just add planting native trees and plants to this? Not kidding, I'm not kidding.
Don't laugh.
Yeah, forget the invasive species, but it would be nice if we could add that, or at least talk about it, at least talk about it. Native plants and trees, there are so many non-natives planted that are hurting.
Did Levine tell you to say that?
Pardon?
Did Levine tell you to say that?
No, but I love Mr. Levine. Okay, that's everything, I think it could be very good, I hope we do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'm having to reach back to remember this presentation, honestly, but it's coming back to me a little bit. Yeah, I think we should definitely support this, and I don't see any drawbacks to it. So thank you for bringing it forward.
Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you, of course I support this. I just don't get the opportunity that much to compliment the General Assembly for passing something like this, so I just want to give credit where credit is due. Thank you.
Commissioner Griffin.
I clearly support moving in this direction, I don't see any downside at this particular point. And if we pass it, it supports all the small towns to join in. point. And if we pass it, it supports all the small towns to join in if they so choose to participate, but it becomes available for that. And, you know, I'm thinking convenience stores, charter schools, developments, and just a whole host of things that could be improved and have the financing over a longer period of time. So, you know, I don't see any downsides at this particular point. And I would also add to support my colleague, Commissioner Powell, if we can do some environmental stuff with some plants and stuff, that would be nice to encourage.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Commissioner Leek.
No comment.
Okay, let me go back to Commissioner Powell.
How will you, I would just like to know who monitors, you know, the loans for the CPACE to make sure there's no greenwashing? Sure. So the economic, I think I can go back, whoops. The Economic Development Partnership, EDPNC, apologies, Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina, are the individuals that actually do the research on the loan applications, ensure that there is no greenwashing, but then also there's factual information included in those applications. And so the onus to do that falls on them. That's good to know, because, you know, like, we're finding in different areas lack of oversight. And so I just, you know, you want to make sure that if people are taking advantage of it, it's authentic and real and not greenwashed. Certainly. Thank you. Thank you.
So a couple of things. One, I want to support Commissioner Powell's suggestion, whatever you want to add. I'm fully behind you. I'm with you. Natives, let's do it. Second thing, I appreciate that this checks the box, and two of our priorities, economic development and environmental stewardship. So that's a great merger right there, and we're sticking to our priorities. And finally, I wanted to defer some of my time to possibly a friend from the city. Would you like to add any comments, or is there anything that you'd like to add? Feel free to go to the mic.
So people online can hear.
Just while we have you. And just remind us of who you are, what you do.
Hi, so Erin Talber, in our City of Charlotte's Office of Sustainability. So appreciate it, but working with Roger and Erin, helping move this forward. We brought it to one of our committees, who are very much in favor of moving forward as well, and providing this as an option for all of the commercial businesses throughout the city and the county to increase sustainability, energy efficiency, and resilience of the properties throughout the county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, with that being said, I know we're missing three colleagues, but I'm confident, I am confident that they would be supportive of this. And Mr. Manager, we'll look for the resolution to come forward.
Along with the public hearing.
With the public hearing, so thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the items that we have on the agenda for this afternoon. Thank you, Chair.
Fantastic. I'm not going to recognize that motion right now, Commissioner Leek. We've got one more agenda item, which is Commissioner Reports, but thank you. Thank you, ma'am. So we're going to move to Commissioner Reports. I'm going to start with Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you. Just a reminder that Thursday starts early voting. Everybody go out and vote.
That's right. Commissioner Griffin.
Yeah, my colleague wanted me to say a little bit more that Ms. Catherine Simmons was a beautician. She was also a businesswoman. She owned the building that she was in that also housed a little clothing boutique, and she owned the property of which Family Dollar now sits on. So she was not only a beautician, she was a businesswoman and a real community advocate in that whole zone over there. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Leek.
I was not degrading Mrs. Simmons because the street was named after her. I just said it because you would know where it's located. Nothing against Mrs. Simmons. Can you hear me? You can't hear me?
Your mic is not on, Commissioner.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You told me not to.
I'll have to cut it off. I was not degrading Mrs. Simmons. I merely stated it was the street where drugs, prostitution is eating up the neighborhood, and the city is not doing its job by cleaning up the area over there. The police department is right down the street. So my recommendation is that we provide the best fitting for the community that they ask for. I'm not going to inject what I want, but if the citizens state what they want, and I hope that this board will recognize the fact, I do have good intelligence, not just Mr., oh, let me, Mr., my friend here who I work with. So please agree with me at some point.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Powell.
Thank you. I don't know who got invited, like, and, I don't know, because there were a couple days, but I got invited to go to an exercise, a multi-county exercise in first responders at Carowinds. And so this isn't, it's not real, what I'm going to say, it was an exercise, but it was multi-county. And so this is the scenario. An SUV comes in, and you know how, like, it's so crowded, an SUV comes in and plows through the crowd that's waiting, and runs over people, and hurts people, and kills people. And the emergency process begins, and the first responder to show up is the police department. And so the police jump out of the car, and two shooters jump out of the SUV and start shooting at the police officer. And I'm just an observer, watching this, this whole scenario. And then the emergency gets bigger. Another SUV comes into the water park, and there are shooters in there. And really, what the exercise is, is them all working together to save the people that have been injured, but also to get the bad guys. And so, like, the response is so massive. There is, there is CMPD, firefighters, medic, SWAT, FBI, helicopters overhead, Novant Critical Care, Atrium Critical Care, all these people, like, as the emergency unfolds in this exercise, all of these partners come in to help. And my background is healthcare, so I see the flip side. When I was working in the hospitals, of we were preparing for that, like, you know, what if we get this mass influx? So to see the other side was really life-changing. I'm really glad they invited me. I'm really glad for the people that showed up. I can't express how much respect I have for all the first responders who are willing to do that work. It felt emotional, even though it wasn't real. You know that they face that every day, like, they don't know what they're coming into. So I just have such a deep respect for them. I love that Carowinds offered the property for first responders to do training. That's what we expect from our community partners. You know, like, that's what I expect. And it was, you know, it's a prime time for Carowinds, but they opened it up for the first responders. And I think that it was just a beautiful thing to see everyone working together to do what is best for public good. And I just say this all so that we always have a mindfulness of what first responders face, and that, like, we're supportive of them because it is courageous work. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I cannot top that report. That was amazing. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. Well, a few things I have on my report. Number one, please go back and listen to Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell on Charlotte Talks. I'll put that out there. Thank you for your representation. That's number one. Number two, as you all are aware, applications close for the Transit Committee. And so I think we got somewhere close to 180 applications for six slots. So it's going to be a lot of fun going through this. But I say that to say, I do want to take this time to thank everyone in the community who has shown interest through our channel and through the city's channel as well, to be able to lend their, offer their time and their talent to the community for such an important endeavor. And I want them to know that we're going to take this process extremely seriously. There are six slots, and we know that we've got a ton of folks that are highly qualified. So the decisions will not be easy, and they will not be taken lightly. There's multiple categories that we have to make sure that we're meeting as far as the legislation's concerned. So just wanted to put that out and just really say thankful, thank you to the community. And then remind us, I think most of us will be participating in Employee Fest. Everyone should have their shirts, commissioner on the back. I might wear a different shirt, though. Just kidding. But no, so Employee Fest is, I think it's Thursday, right, Mr. Manager? All right, fantastic. Well, colleagues, just want to say thank you so much. Did you have something, Commissioner?
I just wanted to say.
Coming to you.
Vermile Diamond Ely Dematria, the Second One High School National Loan Act Foundation passed, and her services are Thursday. So with all due respect, I would ask for your forgiveness to be able to attend that.
And there were two things I forgot. Thank you, Commissioner. I'm coming to you, Commissioner Powell. There was two things. I do want to offer my condolences to the Hoover family. We lost Judge Hoover, just an amazing, 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 amazing man. And my condolences to his wife, and Maya, and their whole family. Second thing is, we lost a, in the Liberian community, we lost someone who was just an amazing person in Jeanette Carpe. And I want to offer my condolences to her family as well, and the entire Liberian community who is really hurting right now. So thank you for indulging me with those two. Commissioner Powell.
I don't know who was assigned to the committee, to the committee that's going to make the choices for the Transit Authority. And so I just wondered who is appointed to that, and when are the meetings?
Yeah. So there are four people on the committee. It's myself, Commissioner Griffin, Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell, and Vice Chair Altman. The meetings, I will have the clerk share those meetings. Obviously, all board members are welcome to come. There's a ton scheduled. So, Madam Clerk, will you be able to send that out and make sure they have visibility? For the Transit Authority meetings, the MPTA meetings. Well, I'm going to have the clerk send them out, because there's multiple, there's multiple dates. There's a ton of different dates that have been scheduled, because there's 180 applications. So there's a lot of dates there. And there are full days that are blocked off. The board will have to have a final approval, absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
The process is just like we normally do, when we always have a committee, the board will have the final say-so over any appointments. So with that, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.